Evening, everyone, and welcome to our council agenda. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mrs. Jewin?
Here.
Mr. Bosson? This is Klein, here. Mr. Greeter?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, if you would, uh, please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic for which it stands.
You're having a hard time hearing this.
Hey Noel, Noel, are you there? Noel? Can you have someone come in and open up these doors, uh, in the chambers? Because we got, we have too many people sitting too close to one another, uh, right now. So send someone down. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the June 29th, 2020 regular session as per funds.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
Two amendments.
All right, um, we, Mrs. Jewin, we have one amendment. And that is, uh, item seventeen, reason to correct language of motion by adding the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred to reflect the expenditure. And this is the resolution approving professional services agreement with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, when the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred in conjunction with the preliminary engineering report on U.S. Highway sixty-three South Intercept Pursuer Upgrade Project, and authorizing mayor to accept said document. So, uh, Mrs. Jewin, would you entertain that amendment?
I would approve all of the agenda as amended.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. Uh, it's now time for oral presentations. Uh, it's an opportunity to speak on non-agenda related items. Uh, and right now, we have Mar Heller from the Ivy Trellis to speak on, uh, parking.
This is Mary Heller. This is Mary Heller from the Ivy Trellis. I'm down there across from Black's Building in Newtons. And we very much enjoy being downtown. We love the atmosphere. We love working with JSA. They're really great. And thank you for giving me some time, uh, to speak to you concerning, uh, this parking situation down here. I'm under the understanding that you all received an email from Jenny from Here's What's Popping, and I hope you read her statements. Um, I do agree with her on everything. Um, we have not had retail rebound in downtown Waterloo like we need. Uh, it's been since the seventies when we, and on, that we lost so much of it. And most of the citizens here are not paying parking or have not paid parking to shop for over fifty years. You know, they've been to shopping centers, strip malls, everything like this. And I really think that we need to think this over again because we have such stiff competition between downtown Cedar Falls and the shopping south of Cedar Falls. We're losing a tremendous amount of revenue, uh, in that, in those particular areas which could be spent down in downtown Waterloo. We really need a two-hour free parking, um, to be able to compete. Cedar Falls has two hour, plus it has three hour on their side streets of free parking. They have no meter parking on their streets. It's only in their parking lots. And we could attract more retail if we would turn in, you know, if we could do the two-hour to three, at least a two-hour free parking on Fourth Street and a block off where the majority of your retail area is. And I believe it would end up bringing more revenue for everybody. Um, I know Jenny's having it real tough, and of course, everybody is with the COVID-19. But, um, it's going to be very hard for us to be able to continue to survive, um, unless we can get more retail down, which brings more customers down. And that's revenue for everybody. I realize there's big cities like Des Moines that have parking, but we pull from small towns where they don't have meter parking. And customers don't like having the meter parking. Uh, they, they wanna have at least some free parking and a variety of retail to choose from. Um, I think that when you make it more convenient for them, you're going to find that we're gonna get more people down there. And I took a survey in my store a long time ago, and I didn't say anything to them. I just asked them on the survey what would make their shopping more enjoyable in downtown Waterloo. And the two responses that I constantly received was free parking and more retail. And now the parking centers are dying off. We need to take advantage of, of trying to get more retail down there and to offer this free parking for customers who come down. Um, we really need to bring it back as close as we can to what it used to be. And I would like to see the city, you know, step out and, and, and do this because I really think that if we're going to survive down there, we really need this help. Um, I can't comment on much more, but those are the things that are important to me and important for me to survive down there. Thank you for giving me time.
All right, thank you. Right, and I think, uh, the rest of the, uh, the one sign up is a little bit later with regards to, um, the ACOM contract on number seventeen. So we'll hold those comments until then. Is there anyone that has anything to, um, that wants to say anything, uh, with regards to non-agenda related items? Is there anyone in cyberspace or with a non-agenda? Do you have a non-agenda related item, ma'am?
Thank you. Um, my name is Cheryl Powell, and I live at five thirty Devonshire. And we've lived there fifty-two years, probably the last ten to fifteen years. We've tried to work with the city to deal with the Deline Creek flooding. And the other day, um, Maggie or Margaret came with me and we went around, and she was very helpful, listening to everything we had to say. And, um, I just don't want our neighborhood to get lost. The other projects that were going on, I know they were talking about the sixty-three corridor and Thursday. And I want to thank her for everything she's done.
Did you get flooding into your house?
Yes.
You did?
There was probably about ten houses in our neighborhood. And the Deline Creek floods regularly.
Did you, did you report that to, as well to, um, uh, partners that, that's your situation?
We tried to call, but nobody answered.
Did you leave a message or anything?
Yes.
Give me your, well, uh, let me see. Give your telephone right there, that gentleman. And, um, I'll have, I got Randy on the line, and I'll have somebody follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else with a non-agenda related item? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Abbott, and I live at four oh three Belmont. Uh, we've had several accidents at our corner because there's not a, uh, a yield sign, a speed bump, a stop sign. And in that area where I live, there's a bus stop off, there's a parked kitty corner from the, uh, from my house. And everybody just zones by there. They don't pay no attention to the street signs. And I don't think a yield sign would be good enough because they just shoot right through it. I think a stop sign or a speed bump. And I do have a petition that I had all my neighbors sign and everything.
Is your, your telephone number and stuff on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm gonna take that and give that to our traffic department.
Okay.
Uh, and they will follow up with you as a way of the box of concern.
Okay.
All right, you can leave it with that gentleman. Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else on non-agenda related item?
Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Lori DeVries, and I live at nine oh two Home Park Boulevard. And I want to personally thank Mayor Hart and Councilwoman Margaret Klein for coming out on Thursday when the water was covering our intersections, sidewalks, the lawns. You saw the whole thing.
Mrs. DeVries, there is no way that I want to cut off a company right now with all, all that we've been through. It's really hard to, so, but there is, uh, item number seventeen.
Oh.
That's coming up. So I'll, I can have you, um, go right after, uh, Kim Adelman, and I can move you up to the, to second to be able to speak.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
I just, I didn't have an.
And then I want you to repeat that again.
Okay.
I, I'm questioning. Okay, yeah, we got a little ways ahead of you guys, but we're gonna try to mix some things together and hurry up and get item seventeen. So is there anyone with a non-agenda related item? Uh, council? This is, uh.
Good mayor.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Go ahead, Jonathan. All right, thank you, council members.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would definitely remind everyone, um, that while it is summertime, and, uh, summertime is great, we are still living through a global pandemic. Um, we have seen numbers in Iowa and in fact, uh, so I would just encourage everyone to be kind, uh, wear a face covering, whether it's a mask or a face shield, uh, and maintain social distance, um, when possible just so that we can get this thing under control so that we can go back to a simple, normal situation.
Thank you, great reminder. Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things here, uh, four things exact, uh, for exact, but, um, my, my first thing is, we talked about a study for, uh, the fifth and sixth street conversion from one-way to two-way. When is that going to happen, that study? Okay, uh, that's, that's number one. If you could please get me and other council members an answer to that. Uh, the second thing is that, um, we, we had a work session talking about downtown parking. Uh, Mary Heller, uh, talked about downtown parking. I've got other, uh, I've had other conversations with downtown businesses about this issue. And my understanding is that it's not on the agenda. Well, I know it's not on the agenda this week, but it will be next week. And I just want to alert you, Mr. Mayor, that I'll be introducing amendments to that, uh, motion or that agenda item on republic parking next week. Uh, next thing is, there has been a discussion. I know that Director Funchess has talked about the, uh, racial equity, social justice toolkit, um, uh, a month ago. I, I know that I had specifically, uh, talked to the council about things that I believe the council needs to be doing. And I just want to inform you, Mr. Mayor, that we are moving forward on several different initiatives that will be presented to the council as human safety and justice ordinances and resolutions. And then the last thing is to, uh, echo what, uh, Councilman Greider had said in that I hope that everybody, uh, will mask up. And I, I hope, and I myself will be bringing to the council a resolution, uh, on a letter of demands to our current governor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, two things I'd like to echo, Mr. Greider and Mr. Morrissey's comments, um, on face masks. I personally cannot come out, come down to City Hall, participate, um, in public unless people do have the mask on. And I know that there are many other people in my situation. So I would just ask everyone to be considerate of others, um, and, and wear the face mask. Also, I'd like to mention, Mr. Morrissey talked about the toolkit. Uh, when, uh, Mr. Funchess brought that to us a couple of weeks ago. At that time, I had quite a few questions and was assured that there would be another work session to address those questions. So I hope, um, Mr. Morrissey isn't preparing to bring something to the council before we have another work session to address a lot of questions. Thank you.
And, uh, um, Director Funchess and I probably had one for sure in a meeting, uh, last week, pretty lengthy meeting about, uh, just the commission and some, uh, other areas. And so right now, uh, in regards to some of the questions you have, uh, he is reaching out directly to the, uh, people that created and have done it as well. So once he reaches out to them and gets some of the appropriate answers, uh, then, um, he and I are supposed to sit back down and talk and then, um, figure out how to, uh, work with the mission in the council to, to bring something forward. But he's waiting on information right now, as of the last time he and I met. And I did tell everyone that we would sit down and have a meeting. We did that part, we're just waiting on some, some other information. So that created, uh, the toolkit. All right, uh, Mr. Jewin, if you want to close the oral comments.
Motion to close the oral presentation, save content, and place on file.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, adding to one A1 the bill's payment amount of five million, four hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents to receive, approve, and place on file.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second, council. Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, could you?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. A, or, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yep.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson? Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Pardon?
All right, all right. Thank you. Um, I was gonna try to do two, three, and four together, but I think we'll probably do those separate. Uh, can someone take number two for me? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 Ward Drive Rise Project Contract Number nine seventy-seven.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, are there any comments on file?
No, we did not receive any comments.
Is there anyone in the audience or in cyberspace that would like to speak about Ward Drive Rise Project any second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion to be made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, any conversation on this item? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read the bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We received five bidders on this contract. The estimate for the project was seven hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. We received five percent bid security from each contract. Our first bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Reinbeck, Iowa, in the amount of one million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars. Our second contractor was Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, in the amount of eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars. Our third bidder was Veeth Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. Our fourth bidder was Pierce Tobin Construction of Albermann, Iowa, in the amount of one million, two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. And our last bidder was Kay Cunningham Construction Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of nine hundred three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thank you. Number three, please. Number.
Mayor?
Mr. Mor, uh, Amos? Who was that?
Yes. Yes, it was, it was me, Mr. Mayor.
Well, go ahead, me.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a mo, a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for West Ridgeway Avenue with Greyhound Drive Traffic Safety Improvements Project, Iowa DOT grant, project grant number CS dash TSF dash one eight five five parentheses seven six two parentheses dash dash eight five dash zero seven.
Okay.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
All right.
Oppose?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just for corrective purposes, so it reads, it's, uh, uh, Councilman Amos, um, reversed the eight and one in that, he had one and eight, it should be eight and one.
Mr. Mr. Amos?
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey.
Mr. Amos?
You're welcome, Gerald.
That's going to cost you ten pushups and about fifty dollars, so get ready. Um, all right, so that, so that's duly noted. Uh, so do we have anyone in cyberspace or here that would like to comment about Greyhound Drive Traffic improvements going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make, to make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second, and there aren't any comments on file, so to mention. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor? Like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to traffic engineer for review.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
We received two bids for this project. The engineer's estimate was two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. Our first bidder was K and W Electric Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. We received a five percent bid security in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and seventy cents. Our second bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Reinbeck, Iowa. They also received a five percent, five percent bid security. His bid was in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. Two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Uh, could someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the asphalt emotions for the city's recycled asphalt paving program.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in cyberspace or within this audience that would like to speak about the asphalt emotions saving program? Any second time?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, close the hearing?
Okay.
Motion been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed. No comments on file?
No comments on file.
Like to, uh, make a motion for resolution confirming specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Okay. Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Council, discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to receive, uh, receive file and instruct city clerk to read bid.
Okay.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? All right, Madam Deputy Clerk?
We received, uh, three bids for this project. The engineer's estimate was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Bitmuss Materials and Supply LP of Des Moines, Iowa. We have a minute, minimum and max, maximum quantity and unit prices. The minimum bid quantity is one thousand, seven hundred sixty gallons. Maximum bid quantity is five thousand gallons. Unit price is two hundred and thirty-one, or two dollars and thirty-one cents for minimum, two dollars and twenty cents maximum, for a total of four thousand, sixty-five, sixty, minimum, or eleven thousand, maximum. Uh, in the same bid is nine hundred and forty gallons, minimum, five, fifty thousand gallons, maximum, at a unit price of three dollars, minimum, or for, three dollars or two dollars and fifty cents, for a total of two thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars, or one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Two hundred and thirty, uh, minimum bid of two hundred thirty-six gallons, or fifteen thousand gallons, at a price of three dollars and forty-two cents, or one dollar and ten cents, for a total of eight hundred seven dollars, or sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The next bidder was Flint Hill Resources, minimum of one thousand, seven hundred sixty gallons, maximum bid of five thousand gallons, unit price two dollars, two point zero zero four, or two point zero zero four, for a total of three thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and four cents, or ten thousand, twenty dollars. Uh, nine hundred and forty ga, nine hundred forty gallons, minimum, or fifty thousand gallons, maximum, unit price two dollars, two dollars and three, five, seven, point three five seven, or two point three five seven, or for a total of two thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, or one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Uh, minimum gallons of two, minimum of two hundred thirty-six gallons, or maximum of fifteen thousand gallons, for unit price of one point six one two, or one point six one two. or one point six one two, for a total of three hundred eighty dollars and forty-three cents, or two, twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Foyce.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, I would like to make a resolution approving a order of euminius materials and supply help give Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars in construction of asphalt emulsions for the city's recycled asphalt paving program. Approving the contract bonds in terms of its insurance and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, on five, six, seven, eight, nine, if I can have, uh, Mr. Bosson take those?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a, receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing. Five, amendment to the downtown Waterloo River, urban renewal and redevelopment plan. Number six, an amendment to the Martin Road Development Plan. Number seven, amendment to the northeast industrial area urban renewal and redevelopment plan. Number eight, an amendment to the RAS urban renewal redevelopment plan. And number nine, an amendment to East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, sir.
Point.
Yep.
Just point of order, uh, the rest of the motion should read, uh, should be read in as well to update.
Another general updates to the plan. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Cause that is in, yeah, that is in the motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Got number five to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan, other general updates to the plan. Number six to update projects for Martin Road, budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan. Number seven, northeast industrial, to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan. Number eight, RAS urban renewal, to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan. And number nine, East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal, to update projects, project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
All right, thank you. Duly noted. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. All right, so the hearing is open. Is there anyone in cyberspace or in this audience that would like to speak to, uh, five, six, seven, eight, and nine? Going a second time. Are there any comments on file?
No.
Mr. Bosson.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close the hearing.
Second. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a motion to adopt a resolution for number five, affirming previous determination of the area of the city to be an area of slum and blight and economic development. Number six, resolution affirming the previous determination for Martin Road to be an economic development area. Number seven, in northeast industrial area. Uh, resolution affirming previous determination on an area of the city to be economic development area. Number eight, for, uh, RAS urban renewal, a resolution affirming previous determination of the area of the city to be an area of slum and blight and economic development area. And East Waterloo Urban, uh, Unified Urban Renewal, uh, determination of the area to be an area of slum and blight and economic development area, for all of these above, determining that the development or redevelopment of that area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, welfare, designating the area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and approving the plan and amendment.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions, comments? Madam Deputy Clerk. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I just, um, okay, never mind. Never mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Um, Miss Deputy Clerk.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you. Could someone take number ten?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I don't.
We have to go in and do each, um, resolution.
He did. He went through a resolution of, he did each.
Then there's, on number...
He didn't do number ten.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I went five to nine. All right, cause, can someone do number ten? I saw the deputy clerk, uh, I've got down, anybody, please, take number ten?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr.
Go ahead, Councilman Morrissey. Go ahead, Council.
Thank you, bro. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing on an amendment number three to the Crossroads Waterloo River Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to remove properties from the urban renewal area, update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan, and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments? Uh, is there anyone in the audience or anyone in cyberspace that would like to comment on, uh, amendment number three for the Crossroads Waterloo? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, close the hearing, and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the planning program and zoning commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare, designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Bosson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Ma-
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ma- I'd like to make a motion, receive file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa. Buying for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District and other taxing dis- districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel discussions? Um, this, uh, this, uh, uh, roll call.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number eleven, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos, this is yours all the way.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that is amendment number six to the San Martin Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to expand the boundaries of paid projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Deputy Clerk, are there any comments on file?
No.
Uh, is there anyone in cyberspace or Zoom land or on the phone or in the audience that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of the planning, programming, and zoning commission. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution of affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area necessary in the interest of public health, safety, and for welfare. Designated said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive file and consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance providing the general property tax levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described San Martin Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa. Buying for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Um, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
No.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second, third times and adopt the ordinance. Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, could someone take, uh, number twelve, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Is that, who's that?
Foyce.
Mr. Foyce.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for selling payments of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Commercial Street and Sixth Street in the amount of one dollar to six pound properties LLC, including in food development and minimum assets in agreement in recent resolution number twenty twenty dash two two six.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in, um, on the, uh, computer or in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the selling of payments of city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Commercial Street and Sixth Street to six pound properties LLC in the amount of one dollar, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions?
Mayor.
Mr. Bosson.
If, if Mr. Anderson could, uh, confirm that, that, uh, this project is still on its original timetable to be started and finished, uh, as per the amended development agreement that we did, uh, earlier this spring.
Mr. Anderson, uh, I heard Mr. Bosson's question.
Yes, well, Anderson, uh, we planning and development director, and, uh, he, yes, uh, last talked with the developer, they are on schedule to start construction still. Um, we, the timeline is pretty much recent. I mean, I think we've done, uh, they are having a little bit of difficulty trying to get to contractors, uh, with open related to work, to work in some places, but, uh, we're, we're confident that he really knows, that's what keeps them all updated. Uh, this is, this is a, a hopefully last action for these students. Um, to, to create a sufficient plan to, to afford our, to fund our, to create projects.
Uh, you down, Mr. Bosson?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Klein?
Could Mr. Anderson remind us of what kind of a tax abatement this developer's getting?
Um, just, uh, recently I met that with me, um, it was, uh, this one was twenty years at seventy-five percent. Um, originally it was smaller than that, um, with the state, um, not continuing the Iowa housing tax credit process for large cities. The state has restarted that for small cities, but not large cities. Um, we did, uh, up that percentage rate from the original, I think it was sixty percent, um, to the seventy-five percent to try and make up that difference.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, I can't support this based on that. Seventy-five percent off your taxes for twenty years. The building is going to be twenty years old. It'll be ready to be remodeled or knocked down. When the city is never going to see money back for this. Plus, we're giving this guy the whole land for a dollar. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money, so I can't support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, will not be supporting this. And the reason I'm not supporting it is because we went from forty-two percent tax rebate to seventy-five percent tax rebate. That's a thirty-three percent, uh, increase in that. That thirty-three percent increase, even if you just reduce that or made it so it was fifty percent, we could use money saved, uh, in fifty to seventy-five percent in providing for human service needs within the city of Waterloo, such as the warming house. Uh, I, to me, it's just unconscionable that this kind of, uh, taxpayer money is being lost when that taxpayer money, when we want it to go, our human service needs is denied. That's my reason for opposing this. I voted no. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Yes, I, I'm just, uh, curious, um, as far as this agreement and things, what kind of dollars is it that the city would be looking at generating behind this project?
No.
Anderson, you're the development director, so just to recap real quick, um, the, the city acquired the former flea market building there, which is about eighty-four hundred square feet. The, uh, developer owned the next lot, next, that which was eighty-four hundred square feet, and then we've identified a vacated alley and sufficient land close to the levee. About another seven to eight thousand square feet on there, creating larger local site. Um, the development agreement is set up so that they would have a two point five million dollar value. Uh, the base value of the land out there right now is pretty two thousand dollars. Even with the seventy-five percent tax rebates, um, they'd be paying about thirty-six thousand dollars a year additional taxes in the city, uh, which we make in sight without being paid at all. So over that twenty-year period, we still gained three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax in City Waterloo. Plus, you'd have residential apartments there, potential of commercial development there to generate additional people paying for goods and services and stuff.
No.
Thank you.
No, if I can ask a question as well. So right now, just so that, um, there's, it's not misconstrued by the public and those that are watching. Right now, we're generating, how many calls are you receiving for Sixteen Commercial Street to actually have some type of redevelopment?
This is the only developer that's shown any interest in the site.
And number two, are we giving, who's generating the taxable value on that property? Is it the city or is it the developer?
The developer would obviously be building the, the building on there and, and so you'd be soliciting the home fire percent basically after the.
So over the course of the time, the city could put attention to see three hundred and sixty, over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from something that doesn't even exist right now. So we're giving back a portion of what the developer is actually putting on the property. And there's no one right now that is beating down the city blocks to come in and put something there. Um, in addition, this project or other projects also pay, uh, water be, they pay water. Uh, they pay, um, uh, sewer, uh, they pay electricity. Uh, and it also brings people, uh, downtown, uh, because there is an absolute need for more downtown residential. So I just want to make sure that folks know, um, this is, the monies that are going back are from what is generated um, by the developer. So just wanted to make that clarification. Mrs. Klein?
Yeah, Mayor, this is, well, I mean, right now, the, that site is generating two hundred and forty dollars a per.
This is fine.
I think it's unheard of to give seventy-five percent off your taxes for twenty years. I also know that we do have apartments available downtown, downtown that are having a difficult time being rented. I also know that there is a, uh, apartment project going up by the library that has yet to be completed. I just think this is giving way too much to a developer, way too much.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm kind of confused here, sir, because we voted on this resolution with the tax rebate. We had a lengthy discussion, and I originally was not in favor of it, but it passed the council. All we're really voting on today is a, is conveying some additional land so they can expand their footprint for a dollar.
Pretty much.
I'm confused because, like I said, this council passed that development agreement months ago. And, and like I say, because of, of a, of a title and a description change, this would have been voted on a, a month ago. And like, as I said before, all, all we're voting on is expanding the footprint of that building for a dollar. I, I just, I'm, I'm really confused at, at the, at
The other.
the change here because, okay, I'm sorry, I'm done.
No, keep, no, you're good. Um, can we vote on it? Um, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution approving a development agreement for Six Pound Properties LLC and rescinding resolution number twenty twenty dash two two six and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
The motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Noah, make sure to keep, uh, counsel aware of, uh, progress on this as well with the other stuff. Uh, number thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the request by Personified Incorporated to vacate approximately twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of Bluff Street right of way, located adjacent to three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
No.
Uh, is there any, anyone on that would like to comment to this particular project in the audience or on the phone or cyberspace?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment if I may.
Please do. You can identify yourself.
My name's, uh, my name's Bill Rogers. I'm one of the co-owners of Personified Incorporated. And, um, I think it would be a great addition to, uh, our property to acquire this. It, uh, the roads and disrepair, it, uh, hasn't been really maintained very well. We've been taking that upon ourselves. And we also do our own snow plumbing. In addition to that, there's, uh, people drive around that building, although it's a dead end. Uh, what we've discovered is they kind of drive around and, uh, pick things up around the building that, um, don't necessarily belong to them. So we would look forward to acquiring this and proving the property and, uh, putting it to better use.
Mr. Rogers, could you, um, give us, uh, an address?
Uh, the address of the business is three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street?
Right, um, no, your address, I'm sorry.
Oh, my address is, uh, eleven zero nine, uh, West Ninth Sixth Street, Peter Falls.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Mr.?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of the planning, programming, and zoning commission. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance approving a request by Personified Incorporated to vacate five thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of Bluff Street right of way, located adjacent to three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counselor, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Rogers, uh, you still on the line?
Yes, I am, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can. Um, do you have any time constraints on this? Uh, you need to move ahead fast or do you have any time constraints?
Well, there is a contractor, uh, that's going to be doing a paving project for us and resurfacing along that street. And, uh, he is a busy man, and we do have him scheduled. So the sooner that we get this pushed through, uh, the sooner that he'll be there to do the improvements for us.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is the sale and conveyance city-owned property, property generally described as vacated Bluff Street, budding three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street, for personified ink in the amount of one dollar. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time. Mr. Amos?
Mayor, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, hearing's closed.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally described as vacated Bluff Street, abiding three twenty-six West Seventeenth Street, for personified ink in the amount of one dollar, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Counselor? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Greeter? I mean, sorry, Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a development agreement with Personified Inc. requiring improvements to the area vacated and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number fifteen, please. Fifteen, someone? I'll take it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located northeast of nine forty West Seventh Street to Clark A. Holdman in the amount of five hundred dollars and approval of a development agreement. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone, are there any comments on file?
No comments on.
Uh, are there, is there, uh, anyone in cyberspace or on the phones that would like to comment on this? All right, Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and writ, well, just, close the hearing. Second.
Motion's been made with a couple seconds on that one. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, adopting a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located northeast of nine forty West Seventh Street to Clark A. Holdman in the amount of five hundred dollars, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counselor? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a development agreement with Clark A. Holdman for the demolition of buildings on site and cleanup of site and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counselor? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Greeter?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take sixteen, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally described as eighteen oh nine Blackhawk Street, the amount of one dollar to five D LLC, including a development. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Are there any comments on file?
No.
Are there any, um, would anyone like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? All right, Mr. Greider?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of property generally described as eighteen oh nine Blackhawk Street, the five D LLC, the amount of one dollar, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counselor, questions, conversation? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement of five D LLC for the construction slash rehabilitation of four phases of projects totaling fourteen thousand five hundred square feet of commercial buildings and eight hundred thousand dollars in new taxable value with a grant of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the multiple phases and rescinding the previous development agreement with Three Little Land LLC executed on February seventeenth, twenty twenty, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counselor?
Mayor?
Mr. Bosson?
Bosson, thank you, sir.
Bosson, thank you, sir. I, I'm, I'm, uh, impressed with this development agreement for the, for the simple reason that there are caveats built into this agreement that if the developer does not meet or exceed his timetable, does not put the buildings in according to schedule, that he plans to pay back this money with interest. And, uh, I haven't seen one of these come before the council before, and I would like to see us work towards that in the future so that we do have some, uh, not teeth in our agreement, but we do have, have the ability to, to, uh, see that our agreements are, are, uh, put in in a timely manner and, and and built in the timeframe as the, the agreement is set forth. But, uh, as I said, this is the first one that's come before us where they're willing to end the agreement, pay it back, pay the money back with interest, so I have to support this whole, whole argument.
This one.
Hey, Mrs. Klein.
I agree. I was looking at that and I thought it's the first time I've seen some accountability. And I approve of that all the time.
All right, anyone else? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. June.
Yes.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with five Bs LLC for the maintenance of the northwest corner of Blackhawk Street and West Pete Street for the development agreement and rescinding lease agreement executed, executed July ninth, two thousand and eighteen with Free Little Land LLC and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mrs. June.
Yes.
Mr. Bosson.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, someone take seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein.
Number seventeen is resolution approving professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in conjunction with the preliminary engineering report on U.S. Highway sixty-three South Interceptor Sewer Upgrade Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Number eighteen is a resolution approving a ward of bid to Aspro, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of three million, two hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars and forty-eight cents and approving the contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with fiscal year twenty twenty asphalt overlay program contract number nine nine two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And finally, number nineteen is a resolution approving amendment number two to the professional services agreement with I and S Group, Inc., originally executed March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty to convert the construction administration phase from hourly to a fixed fee of fifteen thousand dollars per owner in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center Penthouse Chiller Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Um, so, we will, um, we do have, uh, two people, uh, signed up, uh, to speak on seventeen, but uh, is Doug or Randy or someone on the phone line right now?
Uh, I'm here, man.
Is AECOM on the line?
I am, Mr. Mayor, Doug Schimbo with AECOM.
So could, uh, one of you, um, give us all a lovely
Yeah, so, we're going to do the preliminary engineering report, sixty-three studies. Um, we have started modeling because we knew it was urgent, uh, and, and basically the modeling is the goal from just south of Highway twenty near the Hudson City limit, all the way up to Hope Park. We're gonna take a look at developing alternatives for the improvement to reduce the sanitary sewer overflow that we, uh, talked about a couple weeks ago that wasn't happening. In addition to that, we're gonna put together some plans for the improvement and then also take a look at the phasing of the improvement. How are we gonna do that in the next in a couple years or whatever the council decides, um, changing, might have to change the priorities moving forward. And some of the other improvements that we're looking at, that we know this is a, is a priority. It's not, so, so, that's part of what we're gonna do and with, with city staff and the council on coming up with a phasing plan on how we're gonna build the improvement. As we talked about, um, the big thing is increasing the capacity of those sanitary sewers all the way from the industrial area, which is, 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 uh, usually, uh, thousand twenty, all the way up to, uh,
So, let me ask, keep going.
Okay, and, and we, we talked, um, about the schedule. Um, with, with city staff and, and we're hoping to get through the modeling portion of this to see um, what improvements are, are needed out there and the increased capacity of the sewer, um, for the entire limit. Uh, and then as we talked about in the, uh, park and reverb area, potentially uh, cutting over that thirty-three nineteen, which should be called the most inspiring creek corridor. This one, um, that we're hoping to be able to do physically change that to get down to the new interceptor sewers that are upgrading on sixty-three. So that's part of it. We want to make sure that we can do that in our plan will be to, to do that area. Then obviously, that's the most important area that, that, that was previously that is.
So, so to reiterate, because I know folks want to know what has changed since the last conversation. So we've had, uh, we had another potential project that was slated and approved uh, by the EPA, correct? The interceptor. So what we're taking a look at is reprioritizing the project which folks want us to do, and now we're moving to, um, do the to, to do the modeling for the Highway sixty-three South Interceptor portion so that we could divert some of that flow to that area. Is that correct? Because that's what folks want to know. What is going to happen? What have you reprioritized? Is that, is that a correct statement? If not, let us know.
I think you summarized it well, Mayor.
I just want to summarize it correctly, because anything I can, I just want folks to know because they've been asking. Uh, we have been out to visit and the, it was incredible flooding of water, uh, last week, so, uh, folks want to know what's going to be done differently. Um, we have, uh, Kim Adelman on behalf of Panera, Panero?
Hi, um, Mayor, council members. So my name is Kim Adelman. I'm speaking on behalf of Eka Panero, um, who lives at seven twenty-four Reber, as well as community members, of course, who are not able to be here because of work obligations, but because of home obligations. Um, so since the last meeting, pumps were placed last week when the storm came through to help pump that water out, but not until after many phone calls were made to the city and there was already significant water backing up in the streets. We do thank you for coming and visiting and seeing that. We hope that'll help to kind of push this matter forward more quickly. Um, but, you know, Ms. Panero had backup in her basement for a third time. It was significantly less this time, but she still needed to clean up from having sewage in her basement again, um, for sanitary reasons, of course. So, since the last backup, she had purchased a pump to help prevent, um, significant backups from happening again. However, during this last storm, the power was flickering on and off, and so there was then concern that the pump may not work if the power is out. So now she's in a position where she needs to make another purchase to purchase some sort of a backup system or a generator to ensure that that pump is gonna help her, and we're not even sure that it would help if there was a significant backup again. So, um, you know, that's another expense that she has. This is a constant concern for the people living in this area. People are afraid to leave their homes because it might rain. They're afraid to go in their basement because they don't know what they're gonna find. Um, they're afraid to look at the forecast because they don't want to know if it's gonna rain. You know, I think their anxiety is high. It's supposed to rain again tomorrow. So the storms we've gotten are, they've indeed produced heavy rain, but this type of weather is not unusual for Iowa. We have wet summers from time to time. So these results are not the act of, an act of God or something that is unique. The fact that the city attempted to comply with the DNR guidelines to separate the sewer system in order to protect our environment shows that you want to do what is right. You want to mitigate this problem. Um, but the changes that were made were done hastily without first doing the appropriate research to ensure the system would work properly. This, the, sorry, um, the current backups are in fact due to human error and negligence on the part of the city. Proof of that is the fact that after the lines were reopened, people received less backup last week in their basements. Um, if, if it had been, it's been noted that when these changes were um, occurring, the city or the people doing the, the project knew that this was a potential that citizens could have water backing up into their basement sewage, and they weren't made aware of that. So, uh, that's a question of why weren't, why weren't the people who live in the community made aware that there could be a problem from this? Um, and then we are, at this time, Mayor, council members, we're begging you to have conversations with your insurance company to support the ci- your citizens to show us that you care because we need to feel safe. We need to know that we can put a wash machine back in our basement and it's still gonna be good tomorrow after the next rainstorm comes. We need to know that you guys are a city that will fight for us, and that may mean that you have to swallow your pride and admit that you acted hastily with changing these lines. But we need you to do the right thing, um, and ask for these claims that are being made to be approved instead of denied. Uh, as cleanup efforts continue and possibly will continue over and over every time that it rains, we need to know that we are gonna be supported. Uh, we're bracing for another storm. We need to know that you guys are doing your part to fix the problem and um, we can't continue to afford cleaning up after every storm that comes through. And we don't know what we should do. People are going without, without washers and dryers, without water heaters, without furnaces because there's a fear of putting these very expensive appliances back into a basement and not knowing if it's gonna flood again, and having to replace these appliances over and over is not something that we can do. Um, you guys had suggested going to Operation Threshold and asking for some support in that way. Um, most of the people in this area have been denied. They're all, you know, they're just above the income guidelines, but not quite at a point where we can afford to keep purchasing these items over and over again. Um, it sounds like in order for people in this area to qualify, we would need to ask the governor to increase the poverty guidelines to four hundred percent. Um, so I wonder about that. Um, have you guys reached out to the governor and asked for this support for us? Um, what is the city doing to encourage their insurance company to pay um, or reimburse ci- citizens for the repairs that they've had to make? And, um, if your insurance company isn't willing to do that, are you looking into a new provider? And also, what is the timeline? I hear that the models are gonna be starting to take place. We're working on that, but I don't hear any sort of a timeline, and so I think what people really want to know is, is, I want, I think we want transparency of are these models gonna be ready in a week? Are they gonna be ready in a month, in a year, and how long is it gonna take to get this work completed so that we can sleep at night knowing that we're not gonna wake up to sewage in the morning after it rains?
Right now, we're just trying to pay for it tonight, so we can hurry up. They've already started, but we're trying to hurry up and get this paid for tonight so they can do it. Doug, do you have an estimate on how long this is going to take?
Mr. Mayor, the modeling we're looking at approximately one month, and then the preliminary design report, we're looking at being completed in three months. We're looking at the end of September, beginning of October. We have, um, solutions or recommendations to eliminate areas that have been used, uh, so those are what we're having to do.
So by the, so, so Doug, can you, can you give? Just now.
I mean, for one month, I'm not gonna have water heater, I'm not gonna have a washing machine, I'm not gonna have any of my appliances in there because probably I'm gonna get more water. Because now you're working sixty-three and in Reber Avenue. I mean, probably I'm gonna get more water again. Where, right? You guys are not taking cold showers. I must have asked, we had to do it because we don't have the money.
Mrs. A- Mayor, have you applied with Operation Threshold?
Yes.
And they were denied?
I was denied. I, I, you had to put in four hundred for I can qualify.
Okay.
And most of the people in here are in the same hole.
I think a bigger concern is even once you put that new appliance in, what is to say if, if a new appliance was put in today that tomorrow, when it storms again, that sewage isn't gonna back up again? You know, we can't continue, if people are fortunate enough to have sewage backup on their own personal insurance, we can't continue to make claims. Insurance companies will drop you after you've made several claims, and they put you on a high risk for insurance. And then it's difficult to get insurance in the future, and you're paying high premiums and high deductives.
Mrs. Adelman, you said that, um, she, um, added something to her, her system. What was that?
So she, eh, she's never needed to have a pump in her basement before. She's never had any water, so she purchased a, um, a ba- a pump to put in near her drain so that if the water begins to back up, it'll pump the water out. Right, and now she needs to, I mean, everybody, I think, um, when it stormed last week, kind of went, oh, we have pumps now, but if we don't have a way to power them, if then a power outage happens, those pumps aren't gonna do us any good, so. And that happens when storms go through.
So I'll reach out to the governor's office. About the, she, to do sort of procedures, man. So I don't know that it's a good suggestion, I think, so I'll do that.
Because the two, two hundred percent, it will be for East Waterloo. But that area where we are, we're in the four hundred.
Well, some people, these, well, don't think that you, so I don't want to stereotype everybody.
Well.
I know exactly what you're saying.
Because.
You need to expand that a little next week you're asking, so I'll reach out. I'll, I'll take that too.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, Mrs. DeVries. Mrs. DeVries. No, you were that second person. You, you were.
So, where I left off. Um, my name is Lori DeVries. I live at nine oh-two Palm Park Boulevard, um, with my husband, John, over there. I want to personally thank Mayor Hart and, um, Councilwoman Margaret Klein for coming out to our neighborhood last Thursday when we were having so much flooding. We saw what we've been dealing with. Um, it was over the top, and I have not seen it that bad since twenty ten. And that's when we got like nine inches of sewage at that point. Um, I mean, people were wondering, how much further is it going to go? You know, how much higher is it going to go? But, um, so I'm curious to why we would have that level of water in that intersection if the switch was made to discharge sewage back into Blackhawk Creek? I was just curious, was there another switch that maybe didn't get switched back? Or was that the only one? I mean, were there more intersections? I'm just curious about that. Okay, and, um, also, the claim by the city that the sewage backup was an act of God is really not correct because tornadoes, floods can be considered acts of God. But sewer systems are man-made, man-managed, and human beings made the decision to terminate emergency overflows to Blackhawk Creek that reduced sewer system capacity and forced wastewater into everyone's open floor drains. These flooded basements were not an act of God. I, I hate to hear that because it really was not an act of God. Who made the decision and what was the decision-making process, other than it would save the city from paying fines for the illegal sewage dumping into Blackhawk Creek? I had asked that last meeting about, um, an impact study if it was done, and, and I hadn't received an answer on that one. Um, I just would like to know if that, there was any sort of impact study with the decision-making process was. Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. So, um, Doug or Randy or Brian or whoever's, uh, um, I think the first question was, uh, about why did we have that type of level of, um, water in that area? And then, um, is there, was there something else that was done? If we, if we, uh, did the disconnect, did we do take back exactly what was done to reattach it or to detach it? And then, um, any types of impact studies, or what studies, uh, do you do in these areas or situations as such?
Um, I, I can address some of those, Mayor. Um, so when it comes to, I, I guess that's the first question when they're talking about sewer backing up, um, and as far as the pumps and that, as far as when, uh, if they were turned on. So we, we did have staff that was monitoring, uh, sanitary sewers, and when this event was taking place, you know, there are thresholds that have to be met before we can actually turn those pumps on. And in this case, the, um, sanitary sewers were not surcharging to the point where, um, it required us to turn those on. We can't just do that arbitrarily. Um, you know, it actually has to be surcharging. So in this, in this scenario, uh, the water for which they were receiving is all surface water. There's a lot of passes that go into, um, this scenario, but when you look at the prior two other events, um, you know, how much water to use as far as the water table and everything, um, how fast they came. You know, in this, in this scenario, you know, there was just a lot of surface water, I mean, inundated streets that were top curve some of the areas and into their yards from that. Um, and then when it finally got to the point where some of that water was getting down into their, um, drainage and, and some pumps, and those passes was kicking in. But it, it didn't get to the point where we needed to, um, like those pumps on. The illicit, um, prospect, you know, we, we did have, um, The illicitness um, prospect, you know, we, we did have um, originally thought it was going into that teleport. Um, and that got to on the Home Park area, that was the only uh, recordable um, bypass that we had um, in that actual area. So that was kind of there. Um, and I, I believe the other question, I think that she had was uh, in regards to as far as like the modeling. Um, it was, you know, over the years, and I think Jamie probably has helped, you know, to say some more. Um, I, I know as far as what, um, some of the other ones were removed due to storm sewer, and I have a plan to correct some of those. Um, in, in this one specific area, it was not modeled. But I mean, that, that's what's contributed to um, reducing that storm water that had been hidden in the sanitary to reduce that. So in this one specific area, where we, we reverted it back, that was not modeled. But um, you know, that's what we're trying to do is uh, eliminate a lot of that.
So let me ask a question, because it, it was a very direct question, so. Did we, so we, in the area, we disconnected, and then we connected back? Exactly what was done last year, is that? Is that correct? So we didn't do anything else to her question? Anything else other than what we, the connection again? Yes or no?
No, no, you're not.
Okay, you're moving a little too slow for me. Okay, alright, um, yes, who's next? Yes, please, please come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, like you know it. Um, my name is Kevin Gass, uh, eight one two Kingsley Avenue. I'll try to keep this as short as possible, because I'm pretty much covering what I think everybody else is covering. My first question is, um, we knew that storm was coming at five AM, and I guess Randy answered that you have to have a certain threshold before you turn this pump on. And I guess we didn't hit that threshold until halfway through the storm. And sewer water was flowing back into people's basements. Luckily, luckily this time, I saw the sewer water coming up my um, drainpipe, but my, my sun pump stayed on. I have an overflow in the sun pump, and it shot it out and went back there.
So, so Mr., did you, did you have sewer water, you had water?
No, 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 um, the, I've only had sewer water ten years ago. And then I had this sun pump installed with a backup that runs off the municipal water supply.
Okay.
I will get groundwater trickle, just trickles once in a while. Especially if we get rain like that. I did not get any tr- trickles of groundwater. I had violent sewer water coming up through my drain, luckily overflowing this time, because my sun pump actually stayed on.
Okay.
So, um, so I've kind of described the history of my house. So on June twenty-second, that was the first time in ten years I've had sewer water in my base. Ten years ago, I had uh, fifteen inches. June twenty-second, I had twenty inches. If my sun pump wouldn't have been working this time, this last week, I don't know, it probably wouldn't have been twenty inches, because it was a, a shorter storm. But my, my question, I guess for Randy, um, on the phone, um, why is the sewer water all of a sudden so violently backing up into our floor drains? I'm, I'm not getting the, the groundwater around my foundation. I have a house that's built in nineteen thirty. I, I, I get, I, rainwater, groundwater, clear water. I get that, I don't, I, I, I mean, I don't like it, but I get little trickles. But it's not, it's not an issue. I mean, it, it's just a little trickle here and there, and I rarely get that. But all of a sudden, I mean, this sewer, sewer water is violently coming through the floor drains. And I just have a question, what is different now? Specifically, this last month and a half, in the last ten years? And I guess I will end with this, is uh, this forecast uh, for uh, the next two days and this weekend looks pretty gruesome. I mean, are we ready to deal with it as a city? Are the pumps going to be ready, or after a certain threshold? Because there's actually more rain forecast in the next two days, and then the weekend than it was. So I'm just saying, are we ready? I mean, we need to be ready.
Okay. So, so um, questions, uh, uh, Randy, or Jamie, or Doug? What, what is, what is different right now? We, we received rain before. Like, what's different right now to, to go to the gentleman's question about the force in which it's backing up? Anybody have an answer, or is that what we're going to find out?
I can, I can try to answer that.
This is Doug.
I think the model will.
Doug will be there.
But, but just some of the background information, you know, on the June twenty-second. Like uh, rain, we've had reports, and it wasn't at the airport. Uh, but some of the other locations on the south side of the city, uh, we've had reports of like six inches of rainfall on that Monday. The soil was already saturated from the spades. Friday, Saturday rain, uh, that we had had that weekend, and then we had up to six inches. Quite frankly, I'd like to talk to the folks in that neighborhood a little bit about, like, as part of our uh, buddy of the stakeover committee, um, that we'd like to talk to a couple folks, maybe to meet to the neighborhood, see what happened. We can totally try to correlate the happen with that event. Um, but, but truly, I've known a couple folks that have had up to six inches of rain, and that was over a twenty-four hour period. But the, the event of July ninth was extremely intense, and we had reports of two to three inches um, in, for an hour, an hour and a half, uh, depending on the location of town, depending on the intent in that, that's the pain. Of the area. And that one, Jamie, tell me how, I know you had a lot of intersections of the water from the storm waters, like, um, they hadn't seen before, just because of how intense the storm was, you know, that was. A lot of, uh, on the second event, because of the short duration of a lot of rainfall, it was mainly storm water related. There's, there's the first one, was the heavy rainfall, saturated soil, that had a lot of iron ions. It caused that positive, that's, you know, would have helped probably, because if we had that full storm phase. It's a very different event. But I think you look at areas of the town that were inundated because of that, you know, two to three inch rainfall in an hour or whatever, that caused a lot of issues stormwater side, at various locations and low points along our city and street as such.
Yeah, I know we um, downtown, uh, we had crews downtown as well from streets, but uh, to his question, the second part of his question, and to Mrs. Adelman's question, Mrs. Nero's question. So, right now, we, we take a look uh, at the forecast. Um, how, how are you handling that? I mean, are crews on notice? I know uh, this weekend, I was texting everybody I could to kind of see exactly where we're at, and I think you eventually brought people in. But can you tell me, Randy, or whomever, um, you know, what's, what's, what's going to happen? How are you, are we preparing for this?
Yes, and it's, it's just like what we have in the other areas. Um, we, we always are looking at the forecast daily, uh, we have the river and the river uh, daily, that's something that we, we keep track of. And then when we do see in the forecast that there is potential, uh, you know, we do get the. Like I said, um, in this area, that is a new area, so this is something that we have, pumps up there um, in advance of the storm. Um, someday, you know, we, uh, it's like what we said, you know, we, we bring the staff in um, to be proactive, just to make sure that the pumps are there, in case that we're going to, um, you know, the amount of precept that they're producing, um, goes into play. And then, uh, at that point in time, it's kind of waiting for the vet to take place. And um, so we, we're doing that on every, every rain event.
I, I think, I think folks want to know if they're going to, I think folks want to know if they're going to be a priority uh, as well with our, uh, other spots.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, why are we waiting for the event to happen?
Um, and the question is, uh, waiting for the events to happen? I think they're, they're on site supposedly, and the pumps are near some of those locations, but.
And we know it's going to happen again, so why are we waiting?
To, for the pumps to get there, or what do you mean, for the?
For them to actually be able to hit their threshold to actually.
Okay, so the question is, or I guess the suggestion is, um, let's get them in there uh, even earlier. So we know that uh, there's levels and different things that you absolutely are, are waiting to see. But I think folks just want the relief that uh, if they know it's coming, then we should know it's coming. We should um, hopefully be more proactive in starting it uh, prior to when it gets to the point where you can't even drive down the street. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm John Rees, I uh.
No jokes, no jokes, you get off of it.
What, um?
No jokes when we finish, when you finish your comments.
I'm sure the one that used to call me. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I can go ahead now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm John DeVries, I live at nine oh two Home Park Boulevard. I've been luring about this whole thing, because I think it speaks to, you know, actions speak louder in Word School and Caucus Chief. And uh, the first time it happened on the ninth was on my birthday, which was unfortunate, things happening like that. I talked to the city, and they were like, hey, just file a claim, wire insurance carriers, they'll take care of you, they'll cover your costs, blah, blah, blah. And uh, sorry, but my brother-in-law, he said, man, I'll either say I did that, or say you're what we all's going to. The two things I hear. And each time, or intersections fuzz, it's been worse than last time. And I think the other thing that concerns me is that the city just appears to think we just have all this extra money in a number of houses. Uh, we had to spend like three hundred dollars on fans to dry the basement, because we were getting hosed by the cleaning companies. And that, we had to end up uh, running a storage area, Greenacre Storage, we didn't much do, but don't trust to put it back in our basement. And then I was mowing on Saturday, and all this sewage dust is coming up out of my front yard. I spent all this money with True Green to really try and have a nice yard and stuff. It's just, it's uh, it's just heartening. Our neighbor next door was afraid to go on vacation to Minnesota, because she's afraid basement of a flood while she's gone. And we know some people that actually came back from the Smoky Mountains after the twenty-second, and they moved to a basement full of sewage. It's like, I mean, I think they told me or heard, if, if you haven't lived it, you don't get it. Uh, there's a lot of people, it's me, that have just been, well, listening to the story, and then they're like, that's not me. That's what it is. Whatever you guys can do, that's appreciated.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Ken Maynard, and I live at seven thirty Home Park Boulevard. And as Ms. Adelman said earlier, we do have wet summers in Iowa. July of two thousand and ten, we had ten point nine two inches, and we, most of us had sewer backup. In May of two thousand and thirteen, we had ten point eight one inches, no backup, at least at my home. June of two thousand and fourteen, we had nine point six three inches, no backup at my home. June of two thousand and sixteen, we had eight point nine nine inches, no backup at my home. September of two thousand and eight, we had thirteen point three five inches, no backup at my home. June of two thousand and twenty, nine point three three inches. It's last month. Two incidences of backup in all of our basements, or most of our basements. All of this is since September of two thousand and nineteen, when this change was made, without any notification to any of us that this was coming up, or this could happen. Maybe if we'd have known, we'd have hired something to be done in our basements prior to, those of us that could have afforded it. My source uh, from this information is with the Iowa State University precipitation report, which is available online. On June twenty-ninth, I submitted my claim to the city. Still haven't heard anything from them, whether it's being denied, looked at. I asked it to just be told, uh, an email back to me saying, we received it. Nothing, it's two weeks from today. So, in our alley, behind our house, we have about two feet of crushed asphalt that is floated down from the alley to the end of Fletcher, of our alley. And it's just laying there. We could get a shovel and go put it back in our driveway, because I have a lake in our driveway. And anybody who's between um, West Third and the seven hundred block of Home Park has to drive through that every day, right? Okay, it's been an ongoing problem. We've had the city out there filling that twice a year. As soon as it rains, it all washes down. Um, I'm still waiting to hear from my insurance company. I'm still waiting to hear from your insurance company. Several insurance company people have already heard that they've been denied by the city. This is not right. We pay taxes every year on our homes and our property. And we expect the city to do something for us. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Hey, uh, Mr. 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 Maynard, could you um, could you over there just write down your telephone number for me?
My name is Lindy Colburn, and I live at twenty-one twenty-seven West Third Street in Waterloo here. Actually, we share an alley, so the thing you was just talking about, about the lake, literally right behind my, my garage, so I have to drive through it, no matter, you know, where I'm going every single time. It's, it's actually a huge, huge problem. But um, I just want to go over from the last meeting. Um, I spoke at the last meeting and talked about how dire our situation was after the June twenty-second sewage backup, which we're now sustaining up to twenty thousand dollars in damages to our finished basement. I wanted to inform you that not much has changed. Due to the extent of the damages and lack of financial resources here in town, we still do not have hot water or air conditioning. We were finally able to afford to have our basement professionally cleaned after having our walls, wood flooring, doors, and carpet torn out, completely gutted our basement. My daughter and I were tasked with doing the majority of removing all of the furniture and other belongings that were being covered in feces and filth from the June twenty-second incident, resulting in having to multiple, have multiple loads hauled off to the dump. We're still trying to assess not only the extent of the cost of the damages and services, but the negative health impacts it has shown as well. I'd like to point out that in the past week or so, we've had two separate occasions on which we've had storms with torrential rainfall. And we have not had any sewage backup. That leads me to my first question. Were the old sewer lines or cross connections put back in after the June twenty-second incident? If so, does that show that this was not an act of God, but in fact, it was due to the removal of these superlands? Once again, to say that our household is in a state of despair, both physically, mentally, and financially, is an understatement. That leads me to my last question, which I'm hoping you can answer today and possibly shed some light on the subject, because I think we all are well-versed. Is there going to be some sort of compensation for the city due to it being an obvious mistake or several mistakes? That we all hope our city does the right thing to help its residents desperately in need to get back to normal, living after this horrible sewage incident, due to mistakes made by the city. So, thank you all for listening.
So um, question number one, um, Randy or Doug, um, were um, were uh, were, was everything put back? I think that's the question we, we answered again, but it's for the, for the speaker. Um, the remote, the, the disconnects were connected again, right?
They listed um connect, um one of them was removed. And actually, or the storm in the area where um you know, there was a physical wall that was blocked and you have now such a new track.
And um I can say we haven't, the city has not developed the um again, talking about a compensation. I just just to be completely transparent, we had not. I've done um one, I'm gonna reach back out to see if uh we can do anything from that two hundred percentage to move it up to four hundred percent. So as I was requested, um I guess we've gone through the insurance process and the gentleman indicated he had received a response. So I'm gonna uh call and call and check, but we have not um as a city uh had a discussion about whether or not. Are we willing to pay the twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars? We have not had that. Um we can, we can definitely have a discussion about it, but um as this far, we haven't uh we haven't stated that we're willing to pay. Citizens, just being completely honest, so we haven't had that discussion. So so what we're what we're doing, I you know, I've heard this being because I'm not gonna have it back up. So is there anyone else that hadn't spoken that would like to come up and address addresses?
Hello, mayor, city council. My name is Amy Faly, I live at seven two seven. Um I was the one that called the mayor, one of the people that called the mayor. Whatever day that was this last week, we had the water and thank you mayor for giving me that opportunity. Kind of with everybody else, you know, we're in a situation where we were worried about rain coming. This upcoming weekend, we had to cancel our plans because we're not gonna be out of town, have something. Um so you know, there's plenty of people here that have to cancel their plans, plenty of people here that are just basements. Because again, why put stuff back in your basement if it's just gonna get wet already again? You know, for some people, what thirty-five days, they had three incidences where sewage came in. Luckily for for my household, we only had a half a month. But it was still an impact and there was still a lot of a lot of money wasted, spent, thrown away. You know, again, you say it's an act of God, but I would say if it was an act of God, it wouldn't just be a neighborhood. That was that was doing this. And I'd like to bring up the lock and Eighth Street neighborhood. Those people are telling us that it's been over two years now. They've been telling you guys that they have backflow and you haven't done it.
We've been trying with lock and leak, so we have been trying.
But you haven't changed in two years, so how does that make, how does that make us feel? You know, how does, how do we feel about this three months? Three months when it finally stops raining, so now we can finally go out because it could just be stolen. But you're basically taking our whole system away from us, you can't do anything. And to listen to Randy Bennett basically go back on what he just said, like I thought none of, I thought all the connections were put back. And now he's saying that it's not true. But the last time somebody asked that question, he said it was true. So I got, I take real issue with the fact that Randy Bennett doesn't answer questions directly and he lies. It's clear, he did it today. Um we were called, we called Waste Management before I called the mayor. They said the pumps were in place and going, they weren't at that time. I was lied to by Waste Management. Now we're being told that you can't even put those pumps in place and those are the issue. So how are you going to stop this from happening? You're always gonna be behind eight ball until you fix it. We asked about an impact study and Randy gave a very, very horrible answer to that as well. I'd actually like to see the impact study because if you've done wrong, perhaps you would have had the chance to at least warn us in our neighborhoods. This could have been a problem. So really, we're all in limbo. We're just waiting for the next flood, we're waiting for the next the next event to happen. When this isn't something that any of us has had to create in the past. And why I bring a block in an Eighth Street is because they continuously have to pay their bills for the house. And we don't wanna be in that same situation. So really, my questions are, what, you know, again, what is at hand? If there's something at hand, I understand you can just get it in tomorrow. But three months is maximum. So you know, until we all have waste and backup into the basement is something that. People are not being compensated, people are being handed away from their personal insurance companies because then they can't use. And this is a real big impact for people who are not rich. But they're not pulling on people.
And Doug, um with regards to the the timeline, what actually has to go into this so that um this can get to the point to where there's some type of design and recommendation? What goes into um what you're doing right now or what we're talking about we're gonna pay for on item number seventeen?
So the initial part of it is to do the modeling course to make sure what we're doing, we get it here right and include the people that use it and execute it out. Seeing this development that's been varying along five sixty-three corridor, therefore run multiple frequency events through this system. We have to take a look at the the base and info that's coming into the like pipe, every rain to make sure we account for that action. So first we have to correlate the model, these rainfall bands and try to come up with a explanation we can for the I and I that's going on. And that's what we're doing now, the previous rainfall there. Then we actually have to go in and develop a schedule to see how we're gonna interpret this. That is the model, what we do with the modeling, take a look at increasing the capacity of the sanitary fuel. Not only in in home parks, you know, yep, further on upstate, uh for that two hundred years that we've developed. Sure that we come up with a record page, fifty pounds, forty, fifty years, how many CC two is in this here? The design is actually all fifty to sixty years. A lot of that didn't have that, keeping areas involved after the impact, everything was correct. It was going up, so we just wanna make sure we account for everything in the water that is CC three eighteen. And then we have to take a look at how we're gonna improve whole park, you know, I physically to see if we can get that so, over close, get in the CC three eighteen.
So Doug, so um when we talk about modeling, for those that may not have a degree in it like I do. You're talking about recreating situations and scenarios. Do you only do that for a one hundred year flood or do you do it for a five hundred year flood? But you bring capacity on the system to see how the system is going to react.
Correct, yep. You actually look at two, five and ten year frequency of the I and I sanitary. When we do some certain sign, that's kind of a second event where we have to do data, clear search of the cities. To make that frequency, uh obviously a public tenure, that's probably a lot of the protection. We've found um that underwater bonding. And you saw that throughout, it's because of the curduration, not density wave.
And how's how soon can we create those events to test our system? We've got the parts in missing that that could be done within the next month, but how quickly could we test that system?
Yeah. We've we've already started, so it's gonna be tough to get it any quicker than that. Um you see with the with size, with a lot of gear that that we're looking at. And we wanna make sure we have our ramble, crack and metallic model, make sure we're counting the counting of the I and I. And put the rainfalls in on it and take a look at the capacity in the hydraulic drain line that we were to take all the way to our university. I am a venture by Home Park, with a forty-eight commission, all the way down to the corner edge where Angel Two all the way to the part of the.
But we we are moving at all at at speed and see to try to hurry up. Let's let's focus on it. Probably understand, they just, folks wanna know, I wanna know, councilors, you know, you're moving as fast as you can to get this modeling done. Um and then after you do the modeling, hopefully that's completed within a month. Um based upon what you find, uh that'll determine how you develop the solutions and how long the solution will take. Or what you have to do to that uh CC three area?
That's correct, we we might have to do this survey to see if we can, if we can take the Home Park area to CC three, take CC three to the river. And we need to take a look at um several corridor, how it's true. My project is a little bit before, but it's kind of a truck, the fifty-three corridor and several places, we wanna eliminate some of the. Cities that had account for it, try to straighten that out and also the pipe routers, we just wanna do a solid, solid, solid drain line on the whole system. But honestly, this actually, everything all the way down to the clay area, uh to the south. By the time we have this including the place, uh it's still spread. Again, I'm looking to come up with a bathing channel, see if we can take it out on the basis.
Now, if we, so once you go through, um as you just described, uh for the residency, moving as fast as we can to get through this to get a, get an accurate study. Uh and we decide that based upon, because the Iowa CC three, that project was scheduled for me. But on the list of projects that we we were going to do somewhere.
Not on the list in the next um you know, four, five years, two, three years. There is something that that we wanna take a look at to see if maybe we can give out to change the priorities. But we have also, this is the initial work that the council staff have approved. The North Coast Nurturper project, which we will go back to them and say, you know, we have solved a lot of those issues. We can put there, I know the work that we've done in that first period. And possibly take a look at moving this up, obviously priority to the, to the fact that um North Coast Nurturper, we've solved a lot of those issues. Putting in, you know, we've done, uh doing a C I P T work.
So what what um so what's that process? So people know too, once you, so you go through, you do the modeling and you come up with um uh things to do. If we're able to switch that project, does that go to the EPA to say, you can flip this one, move this project down the road? How does that work? Or if we are not able to move that project, are we able to try to find some other funds? To be able to do that if it's not included in the S R F or if it's not, um if it's not, if the EPA doesn't say we can't move things around?
Right, so that would be the first step is we request that from the EPA because we have have a letter in there with the schedule. And when we're trying to get the North Coast Nurturper, we back that off on number two where we say we wanna move up sixty-three instead of the issues that we're having. That would be the first step to get, we can switch the priorities. There's always a possibility that if something didn't prove another rating increase too, if we want to be, if the case comes back and says no. Um you know, wanting to do the North Coast Nurturper, to be involved, we may have to have a rating increase. Or if you, if something decide you wanna do a quickie, something that we can do here, that's first. That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to give us a future and then give us a reason, a process and what what that's gonna pay to you, to secure.
Um are there any other questions before I move to council?
Council, anyone who's looking shaving over that seven two seven impact nearby? Um I just have one quick question, which um I'd like to direct if I need to um, I'm in bed. Um if the two of you live on seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, like a hundred nearby, what would you do while the city works to go out to take the dissection?
Thank you, so um. And you know, I think it, I think it even, it even goes to, you know, right now, um what I'm hearing and it's helping me and all of us. People are pretty nervous about moving ahead and doing anything, even if you have the funds. So right now, um do we have any suggestions or ideas uh that we can tell uh tell our residents here? About what should be, what what should they be doing right now? Fully go back and redecorate, do all those things and wait, but what would be some advice to help these folks right now?
I think a couple of things you need to take to do, you know, one, uh make a backfill out um to. Hopefully be some of that asphalt that would be coming in. Another thing to take to do would be to to un-pump the nut, bring it into the containers, uh um it was put outside. Um just that it's not extra warm now, things are getting going as well too. Give that excess water that is given into, the excess rainwater that's given into. If anything you could do to help reverse that, that definitely helps, but um primarily we do that back without.
Doug, do you have anything like, yes, sir?
Yeah, no, I would agree on the backfill together that. With clear water getting into the. The attention, uh you can possible battery backup. People are beginning to. About, it happens on a flying purpose, um but. So that's that's something that uh to get people minds of what, as you know, as we see have that working, battery backup on. For the, you know, device that you have a a public system, using the water project to then fly on, like this. Couple of things that residents can consider, consider this about, I just want to do that, or the worries or anybody that has.
Thank you, oh, oh, very, council, um questions, conversations, council. Uh Mr. Mr. Dryder.
So. And I respect what what Randy and Doug are saying, um but my house, which is not part of that neighborhood, we also got water. It was luckily for us, just rainwater, uh but we had someone come out to look at. It was luckily for us, just rainwater, uh, but we had someone come out to look at solving our problem, and they told us that the earliest, uh, that they could come and fix our problem was October. That's a long time from now, but I believe that our constituents deserve, deserve to have peace of mind in their homes. Um, I called last meeting, for us to have a work session last week, which we did not have, on, on how, how we can solve that problem. Um, I wanna wish you the best of luck, Mr. Mayor, on getting in contact with the governor's office, because when I asked them about, this is the governor's resolution, when I called, no one has called me back, but, that's my concern over there. But I really do think that we need to be having conversations with our insurance company, um, the governor's office and others, because. This isn't, I, I firmly agree with them that this is the next god, um, this is some man-made system, um, and every insurance company that I've ever worked with has really enjoyed taking my money, um, and has really not enjoyed having to pay out. And I really think that we need to, to look at how we can help our citizens, or right now, living in fear and anger and lost memories, and that's not fair to them, because all they did was buy a home and turn it up their life.
All right, counsel. All right, we have, uh, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, um.
Mr. Mayor.
We have the payment, the payment for the study, so, um, I'm pretty sure if I ever, uh, knew what counsel was going to vote on one item, probably said, uh, that'll be a definite yes. Mister, is that Mister Morrissey?
Yes, yes, Mister Mayor.
Mister Morrissey.
Uh, speaking to, uh, number seventeen, how many homes were affected?
Randy, or Doug?
On what date? Pardon? On what date are you?
Um.
How many homes have been affected with sewer backups?
Are you talking about, uh, the twenty-second, or are you talking about last week, or what's, what, um, what's the question?
Not all of them, all of them.
Forever?
Uh, uh, just, uh, for the, the home park area on this last event, um, like I said, you know, we had staff that was monitoring the, the, the area tours. And I said, you know, there is a threshold for how to start charging before we would be, uh, eternal pump on. So on this last event, it did not make it a point to where we have, in this whole time, um, the, the one, um, Elizabeth restarts, which internally has failed.
Hey Randy, hey Randy, let me, let me try to, cause you may not have heard Mister Morrissey. Mister Morrissey asked, um, how many, how many calls, how many people said they had, uh, backup? Do we have that number for the two events over the course of the past two to three weeks?
Maybe like twenty, thirty, and forty.
How many?
Twenty, forty, and thirty.
Thirty and forty? Are you t- what, so, so, so wait a second, you're saying that only thirty to forty, uh, households, June twenty-second, and what was it last week? July, July ninth, there were only thirty to forty that had been impacted, or made a claim or called?
Well, I, I can't, I can't tell you as far as what the claims were, um, but we can only just, uh, talk to you as far as what we have as far as temporary tours, um, for the backup.
So the amount that called you, because we also have to list that, don't we, on the website, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and that number is.
And we have to report that to the, uh, if all that is reportable, uh, we'll go report them, but.
So the, so the number you reported was between thirty to forty? But we don't know right now.
I gotta, I can't tell you this much, you know, I don't have.
Okay, cause I, I would, I would rather, I would rather just wait and get that information of Mister Morrissey instead of, uh, telling, telling folks.
We'll, we'll get to the exact.
Okay, I need the exact number, yeah, okay.
Well, Miss, Miss Mayor, uh, from the reaction of the people there.
Go, go ahead, Mister Morrison.
Probably reaction of the people there, I can hear it all the way up here on West Third Street, that, um, it appears that they believe that that's not the correct number. Um, and the funds for this project are coming from, is it the sewer fund, or is it from the stormwater fee? Where are those, uh, funds for this project and for paying, uh, hey, Tom, this, where are they coming from?
How are we gonna pay for this?
Probably through the sewer fund.
Sewer funds, sewer funds, Mister Morrissey.
And it has nothing to do with stormwater monies?
Mister, the stuff we're talking here tonight on seventeen, uh, is the sewer.
Be the sewer fund, and, uh, in relationship to what happened, uh, with the backups, is any of that project being paid on the stormwater monies?
I'm sorry, say that again? I, I didn't, I didn't.
Is any stormwater money being used on the project?
For the study?
For any, for any of them? That have affected the home park, third, Teasley areas?
Yeah, this, this study is actually being paid for through the sewer, um, but there's two different things, um, Mister Morrissey, you know, what we're talking about right now is actually cancerous work, um, it's the form, stormwater, uh, that is actually something that.
Okay, but my question is, on the project, the overall project, does it involve more than sewer funds? Does it involve the state revolving fund? Does it involve stormwater fees? Does it involve, uh, general funds that are being put to pay this project that's, that's being done down there? That the city is sort of saying, well, you know, we were doing something there and it didn't work, so, that's my question.
Uh, so let me, I guess, here's the, just a waiting answer to that. So, right now, what we're doing is we're talking about the studies we have, and that's the point, that it's part of the project, and what all funding courses, what can you see, the paper that? So, well, what we're doing right now with this agreement, this is what, that, that's being funded. Once we get to the point of the actual project taking place, um, then it could potentially be funded from multiple, uh, well, I think.
So, so right now, right, right now, this is a U S Highway C C three South Interceptor Sewer Upgrade Project, so that's coming from, uh, the sewer. Once we find out exactly what this all entails, then we'll work for multiple sources to try to fund, to try to find the funding to do it.
Okay, Mister Mayor, and, uh, what I'm getting at is, um, what I have heard in the weeks that this has been brought up by, you know, residents that have been affected by this, is that they, they've lost severely. And, and, uh, it, it's, uh, been, uh, very detrimental to, it, various aspects of their life, and, uh, they are saying that the city is responsible for this. Um, and they're giving, uh, information, historical perspective on it. And I'm just saying, I'm just asking, if these people are denied their, uh, their insurance claims, or the claims come back and they're denied, and they're left holding that bag? I don't believe that we as a city should allow that to happen, that we need to come up with the funds to reimburse or compensate the people for a loss? That in some ways, I hear the, the city staff, uh, talking, that the city did have, uh, play a part in it. So I, I, I'm just asking, Mister Mayor, that the city come up, if the insurance does not pay and doesn't cover the cost of the compensation, that the city needs to do that? Another part of that is that, I understand the governor issued a proclamation, disaster proclamation, is that not correct?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
A five thou- I think five thousand dollars? Is not there some way that we can go back to the governor and ask the governor to reconsider that proclamation as far as the dollar amounts? Uh, for compensation for the people that have been harmed by this?
I've already committed, I've already committed to doing that.
Pardon?
I've already committed to doing that, uh, Mrs. Vadelman and Camaro came up, um.
Well, I, 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 I guess I'm just, uh, hoping that that does happen, and then my other thing is, I, I heard one of the things that could be done, between now and the time that the project is done? It's for, uh, property owners there that are affected by this, to put in backflow, backflow preventers. And my question is, um, when the pressure builds up so much, what happens to that backflow preventer?
Uh, Doug or Randy, the backflow preventer, what happens, uh, in situations? How does it help or not help?
So that, that's actually what, um, it's designed to do, so this is designed to, um, outflow, but at the point in time that the storm is reversed, um, then the device could be activated, whether it's a ball or a flapper. But that would push it out, and then prevent that flow from coming in, uh, maybe.
Is, is that a fail-safe kind of, uh, uh, fix, uh, Mister Bennett?
Well, it, it, it resolves in the majority of the time, you know, anything mechanical man-made, yes, could always, um, susceptible for failure, but for the most part, that, um, it's pretty efficient at, depending on.
So, uh, one final thing, so the residents that are in attendance or listening could feel pretty, um, assured that if they put in a backflow, like, backflow preventer? That they're not gonna have the pressure build up so much, that they're gonna have a major sewer explosion, uh, at any time because of the pressure that is put on that backflow preventer?
I think what these folks have gone through, I know they're gonna sleep easy until we figure out exactly what's going on. Some of them have backflow preventers as well, um, so I'm gonna let one person speak before Mrs. Klein, if you wanna come up and, if you said you got a backflow preventer, if you could, um, give us thirty seconds of your backflow, and speak.
We got a backflow, winter, and we also had a ball in a different room, and we started surged in both. And then the other neighbor, who was telling me, well, you need to have it because we had surged on June night, on Facebook, he's saying, we need to get this to end, and we're like, we have it on. And then, yeah, he said he had it on also, yeah.
So that, so that goes to the point, thank you, that goes to the point Randy mentioned, uh, in summer situations, it, it, it can help, but not in every situation, as mentioned, Mrs. Klein.
I, I just wanna say to all of you, this, I just think this is heartbreaking, absolutely heartbreaking, and I don't wanna get lost in the weeds about what fund is gonna pay for what thing. We just have to keep our eye on finding this solution and getting it done. The rest of the stuff, every other thing we talked about tonight can be dealt with separately and behind, you know, behind the whole focus of, let's get the plan as fast as we can. Let's get it initiated as fast as we can, that's the way, backflow box, great, but we got, we got to cut the head off the snake, we gotta do it now, and do it as fast and responsibly as we can. These other things are just smoke and mirrors.
And it's very, um, at seventeen, you thought of me for, um, counsel, any other comments by counsel, so we can vote, these people can have? And these people can have some satisfaction knowing that we put this on the agenda, we're moving forward.
Mister Mayor?
Mister Morrissey?
Number, number eighteen, um, I wanna speak to that. I know that there have been discussions by us, this is all local ops and sales tax by, and I know there have been discussions about trying to look at possibly foregoing some of those projects? And not sp- spending as much money as what, uh, this award gives, and I'm just, uh, wondering, uh, what the top priority projects are? Number one, and number two, why does it say fiscal year twenty twenty, when we're not even in that anymore?
Uh, Jamie Newton, City Engineer, if you remember, back, this, this actually bid back on May eighteenth. And at that time, because we were in the middle of, of COVID, at that point in time, we had discussions with staff, myself, Noel, Michelle. And the best thing we could figure out to do at that point in time was to have council push the award date out to today. And so that's what we did, we extended the bid for eighty-one days, to get us to this point where we hopefully had a better idea of where finances are for the local options, for the sale tax, for COVID, for all of those things. Um, and that's why we're here tonight.
And Jamie, the question about fiscal year twenty twenty, you tried to answer that, and I missed it.
Well, it was, it was bid in last fiscal year.
Mister, Mister Mayor, my other question had to do with, uh, the list of, of projects associated with this, uh, three point two million, uh, what are the top priorities? And could we not prioritize and make that amount smaller, um, for local ops and sales tax about?
Anything's possible, but we are doing right now, there are streets from everybody's ward that are in this, um, if. I know which ones I would prioritize, but I'm not, I don't know if council would necessarily agree with me if, uh, if one ward did not get work and others did, um. For the last twenty-five years, we've tried to make sure that, uh, each ward, because everybody pays this local option, that every ward gets some work every year. Not necessarily equal amounts, but at least that they get some work done each year. That's certainly an option if council chooses to, but, um, some streets, and I would like to point out, council, that some of these streets that are on this list are streets that we committed to. Eight months ago or longer, that are part of other projects. Newell Street, for example, is on there, was an overlay of course, the newell this year out by control. We are tying into what control, what the, the live project is in front of control. And we have designed both projects to make sure that the overlay and that, that newel recon match appropriately. Just so council understands, if we don't do Newell Street this year, we will end up overlaying a whole bunch of brand new roads that we just are building this, this tunnel and fall. The same thing will happen with Freyhound and Ridgeway, council just red bid tonight for a project to put turn lane on Ridgway Avenue with Freyhound. We have designed, we've worked with the traffic engineers to make sure that the overlay that we put on Freyhound ties into. The new reconstruction, or the new construction of that turn lane on Ridgway. Again, if we don't do that work this year so that they all match, we will end up overlaying a bunch of brand new work next year. Um, Lafayette Street that's on there, that's a ragby, ragdry route for next year, trying to make sure that gets done. Um, there are a lot of streets on here that are not in great shape. I would argue that all of them are pri- a priority, but again, that's just my opinion, it's really, if council decides they wanna do something different, um. I just want them to understand that whatever, if they choose a different amount than what is on the bid right now, um, some wards may not get anything done this year. um, some wards may not get anything done this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bowden?
Thank you, sir. My concern on this is that we have outstanding projects to reach. If we have, and I need to know, and hopefully our CFO is on, on the line, because if, if we, I just need to know that we have enough money in our local ops and sales tax because we've got some, some obligations that, that need to be paid, uh, of the money that's in there right now. We've got work in University Avenue that's going to come out of local ops and sales tax. We have a hole there. And, uh, I know from emails that I received from, from a city engineer that he's concerned about that these three streets that, that, uh, we, we need to do the tie-in. So if we could prioritize those three streets, I, I, I'd be a part of that. But unless our CFO can articulate that we have all the money we need to make all these projects go forward. I, I mean, I'm having a hard time with it right now. Hopefully, uh, Doug can set the light on this. That's all for now.
I very good sense of information out too earlier today. I, I spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out exactly what we have committed to, uh, local ops and what our balance is and all kinds of things. Um, council, if we approve this entire contract tonight, the total amount of war that has bypassed, you know, less than two weeks ago now, we will avoid it. A total of 9.3 million that needs to come out of local ops and by next, October, by next year. I have not a feeling our contract will be completed. We actually budgeted in the local ops, we got budget when we did this budget back in the winter, we budgeted for less than 8.5 million. So we're already going to dip into fund balance by about 850,000. That's only this, we get all the revenue that we budgeted to do this year. And unfortunately, I say I got some typos on this receipt. Sorry about that. We don't, I'm frustrated. I have, oh, I've talked to somebody today three times, trying to get them to tell us what they're seeing for local ops and they're not really wanting to say much. They're hoping right now to be flat, but they're only talking about for this year. I can't even talk about through June 21, which is what we're really looking at now. So if we have reserves, we need to have those reserves. One of the things that is difficult about construction is actually a word of contract. The contractors and the weather become in complete control of how much work is done and when you have to pay them. And I don't, I don't ever want to be in a position that I can't pay the contract for our employees because there are, there is payroll that comes out of you too because of our cash flows unless, you know, because we did a whole lot of construction because it was dry for a while. So I think it's awfully important to have reserves and I am very concerned about this. The other thing is, the numbers that I shared with you allow for no order and they don't allow for any contract, new contracts to be awarded next spring, which we would normally be issuing other recon contracts and other overlay next spring. And I just don't, very hard right now. I wish I had a good first of all. I don't, but I just, I, you all know, I'm, I'm very concerned about rate of construction right now and not knowing what the COVID situation is bringing for us. Like, well, I think from this one, I can tell you, I thought in March from this part, this would be, it'd be much more back to normal by now and, you know, economic activity would be back to normal. I don't, I don't know that I feel that way today. So it's very hard to know about that. I don't.
So right?
We have so many projects that we are doing are all expensive right now.
We have projects, um, tied into other projects. So Michelle, are you saying that there is no money to pay for these? Or are you saying that, uh, the reserves would be diminished? Or you're saying that you don't know how much the state is going to provide like, um, so I can understand. So we, do we have the money?
If you outnumber it, so there is enough cash there. Take all this right now. They're, they're like, they're likely wouldn't, I don't know that we would have enough of, barely, uh, we would not have enough to award all these new contracts a year from now. And I don't know if we'd have enough cash flow when it gets to the wintertime to pay all the operating expenses. That's what I'm saying. I, I really don't think it's a prudent financial practice to spend all our savings down. It, it will come back and get us. That's why I was hoping that we could, you know, do phases of this and maybe not do the whole thing now, but it's, you know, I guess if we're going to let that all out, I think we all need to really think about, I don't know how we're going to do our reconstruction contract. We, we can't keep doing this much construction every year because there isn't that much revenue. Number one. And then that was pretty totally. This is my projection, showing us our new payment of 50,000 before it needs reduction due to silver. Maybe there won't be any. I, I don't know that yet. I can't get, I couldn't get information. You cannot talk to the person that does the estimate. They're, they're just not confident in getting this out of the question. So I am very concerned that that can be more than, you know, the company.
So let me ask a question. Michelle, so, so right now, the way that we are awarding this, uh, these projects and the money that you're taking this from, uh, or Jamie's taking this from, are we doing anything different than we did last year? So when you take this and you don't have reserve or you have some reserves, are we doing anything different? Is the problem is the, the unknown for next year, but are we doing anything differently right now? Is Jamie doing anything differently than you?
I would say yes, because we have 9.3 million. If we award this tonight, we're going to have 9.3 million in awards out there and we only budgeted for eight point, less than 8.5. So I would say yes, we are trying to do more work, but we aren't getting more revenue to do more work with. And so that's all one problem. Then problem number two is COVID and I don't know that revenues are going to stay at the same rate. And I certainly hope so. Um, but I can't, well, if they can't promise it, I'll think anything right now. So you have two issues going on. We, we really are doing more construction, even these funds than we have historically, I guess. So that's, that's one issue. And then we have another issue in that the, the way that local ops and tax is paid to us and kind of you, they, the state does estimate the, of monthly amounts that they send us all year. They generally only settle that up in November, if you remember. You probably all seen those weeks where we, they're going to pay it or if not, in November for the previous fiscal year. And they don't, they don't give us next year's estimate usually because of the margin. So this work will go on through. It's probably involved, you know, and it depends on the weather. The weather is good, it gets done. The weather is bad, it gets all over the place. There's just a lot of variables in that.
So the, so with the, with the 8.5 versus the 9.3, um, in conversations with engineers or finance and we point the 800,000 addition, um, that was not known that we dipped in for about 800,000 to be the 9.3? Or is this 9.3 just out of nowhere?
Mayor, this is Jamie, the engineer. Some of that has to do with paying for RISE projects that just popped up. The Newell Free RISE is being paid for out of local ops.
Okay.
As a match. So that was, that wasn't necessarily budgeted when all these other projects had come through.
So that's the, okay, because we ended up doing, so.
We ended up getting, yes, we ended up getting the Newell RISE project, yes.
So subtract the project. You know, take the 800,000 from somewhere, I don't know. Can that be accomplished? You can't or can?
Sure, when you're done.
I think we're going to go to Mrs. Klein. She raised, been raising her hand some less.
I, I, I love this thing, but that's a fact. We need to come back.
Well, it's still your floor.
I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Dave.
Prioritize those streets that, that were going to cost us some money. That has to be done this year. If you could, if you could give us an estimate on what that would, to, uh, do those streets that have to be done. Not prioritizing war, prioritizing the, uh, rest of projects.
I can do that, but it's going to take me a while. But I would have that before next meeting.
All right. Appreciate it. I'm done. Thank you.
Mrs. Klein?
That's exactly what I was going to ask. Let's do the prioritizing according to what we have to do and forget about this artificial, you know, carrying up the wards. Just let's do the important stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
I agree with my colleague of ours, my colleague from Ward 1. Um, I think the people of Waterloo will understand that, that fairness is not necessarily the recipe of the day, but equity is. And so I think we, we have to do what makes financial sense and that's prioritize the, the construction projects because like, like CFO Leeder, I have lots of concerns that life is probably not going to return to normal, or we're going to recover the local ops and sales tax. And I think it's, I think at this point, it's very optimistic to assume that we'll even see that. And so I have to agree with my colleagues that we have to just prioritize for this year because this year is this year and hopefully it never happens again, but it, it is what it is.
Let me ask a question. So if there's a deduction from the local ops, does that mean less projects next year? Or does that mean we're not going to be able to complete the projects in every season?
I would say that depends on how many we award and how much the first fall is. That's why I think we need to be careful about awarding your full community. It's, because we still, we also fund some operating departments out of this. So the total budget is more than that. I just, I don't, I don't want to get everything so close that we can't do all of that. That's, we need to keep main people, we need to keep fixed roads, we need to keep doing road construction. I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to doing the project. I just, I don't have enough money in the piggy bank to do that. I'm not. And we can, we can freak if you want to, you can freak next year's contract. That'll. So that, that, I mean, our total budget for the year, there's probably another, I, there's another million in operating expenses on top of that nine. One.
All right, Mr. Amos?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I'm listening to this, but I'm also hearing that the funds are there for us to continue on doing things that we need to have done as a city. And yes, I understand the, the COVID issue. I understand, uh, CFO Leeder's concerns. But as a city, I, I'm really concerned that we are letting this control us and we're not moving forward with the things that we should be doing for the, for the, how, the money, okay. I understand that there's 800,000 dollars that maybe need to be found in order to have this happen. But I'm concerned about us letting the same things go on from the COVID ban place, keeping us from moving our communities forward. Well, to me, it's just a matter of, I, I think you should move forward and deal with the other aspects as we get to those aspects.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, Mrs. Klein, did I ever get to you? Are you, are you done? Is it, does the floor is mine or yours? Do you have something else to add? Or do I go to Mr. Morrison?
It's to this, it's to this end.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the city should be controlled by outside forces. It should be. Tornado sweep through communities all the time and then they have to shift and readjust budgets. COVID has hit the nation. It's hit the world. We have to adjust.
Mr. Morrison?
Masked up America, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm wondering, I think you asked Jamie a question about can that be done? And I never heard an answer back about that 875,000 that the show was talking about.
Jamie, um, based upon the projects, um, is there a project maybe that the, that 800,000 can come off of?
Current project, it would be the overlay, it would be this. But otherwise, we would be dipping into, um, reserve, which it, with all due respect, um, you know, we do have reserves for a reason. Not that we spend it all by any, but, but, uh, that's a, that's a council decision, um, how much they're comfortable with as far as reserves. And, uh, but it would have to come out of this one. I would offer, I would offer two other things if, if, for thought. I mean, if, if council is concerned enough that they don't want to do the whole thing, maybe they go ahead and award half of it now and take a look in the spring. I don't, just throwing that out there. Um, you know, they could, they could award the whole thing now and subject to something else in the spring. Uh, there are options. We are just to the point, and, and also did this back in May. We pushed it to this date for a reason and we have to take action tonight, one way or the other, whether, whether we approve it all, approve part of it, or hold it all down. Um, we have, we need to take action tonight, one way or the other. And if it's to delay it, if it's to, and I know I'm not going to use the right word to sue this divorcee, the table, um,
One week?
Get themselves next week to answer some questions, you know, that's fine too. But we're getting to the point that we need to, we need to do something.
Then we, um, then we do one week, uh, council, and then, um, we do Jamie, Noel, and, um, Michelle sit down and some back there. Yeah, we probably need a motion.
We'll make a motion that we table this for one week?
Mr. Mayor, I still have the floor. Mr. Mayor?
Yep, I'm listening. I thought you wanted Jamie to ask. I thought that was your only question.
No, no. Um, I, I still haven't got an answer for how many projects are included in this 3.2 million dollar, uh, contract?
So I didn't hear you ask that. Jamie, can you ask that question?
When he, uh, Mr. Morrison, I assume when you mean projects, number of streets, there are 14 of them in this, in this overlay project.
Well, so 14 streets and, uh, with Councilman, uh, Ozen's, uh, suggestion, which, uh, Mr. Breiter had agreed with and which I would agree with, um, uh, how much, uh, money would be left over? And then another question I have is, of those 14 streets, has any work been done on any of those streets?
No, we have not done any work because council has not awarded the contract. You can't start work until council does that. No, we haven't done any, started any work. And I would have to go through and, and take a look at the list and come back to council next week with, uh, with, with streets that, that, uh, we have to, we have to do for a tie-on, ones that, um, and that you'd have an idea of what the dollar amount is. I don't have that.
Listen, we, we can sit here and.
Do we have those dollar amounts there with the associated street work?
No, I do not. I would have to, I would have to have one of my engineers work on that. So I'll have it for next Monday. No.
Yeah, you have it for next Monday.
Yes, I can have it for next. Yes, I can have it for next Monday, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Klein.
I make a motion that we table this whole thing until next week.
Do you have a second? To, to table, so, to, to table it so that we can have an opportunity to sit, go through these individual projects and not make a decision tonight. To cut something out that may be attached to something else, we need to methodically go through this, because. We got the email about three or so today, so we just need to, I need to sit down with Jamie and take a look. And come up with something to bring that to all of you, but the problem is, it won't be decided tonight, and we may make a decision. That will have a long-term impact, instead of taking a step back and letting it look, so. The, the motion was to table for one week, uh, Mr. Greider, one of those that made the questions.
Right, I just wanna make sure, because we are debating seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I just want us to be clear that it is eighteen for the record.
Thank you so much, cuz I missed that.
And Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the table.
Right, Mr. Mayor, point of order, uh, tabling is not the correct language, he's postponing.
Postponing for a week, so, um, so on number, uh, eighteen, Mrs. Klein.
I would like to make an amendment to postpone number eighteen until next week.
That motion has been made with a second, any discussion on the postponement? Who made the second?
I am.
Mr. Greider, thank you, sir. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk for the postponement of eighteen.
Mrs. June. Yeah.
So, June is, yeah, she's right behind us, I talked to her myself. What happened?
I.
Who was that? Alright, we got Mrs. June to vote.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Alright, seventeen and nineteen, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mr. Klein. Mrs.
Yeah.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yeah.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Mrs. June.
Yeah.
So, the work on seventeen can pay for, so we will continue on the, for those that stuck around and those that wouldn't be. Alright, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've adopted a resolution approving the community, community catalyst remediation grant contract number twenty dash C T B F dash zero-two-eight. With Iowa Economic Development Authority, the amount of one hundred thousand dollars on redevelopment property located in Fort Worth, twenty-seven and Fort Worth, twenty-nine West Third Street. And four five Barrett Street, unauthorized prior to expedited document. Number twenty-one, adopt a resolution, subpoena request of PTA engineers on behalf of Pittsburgh Development to approve the final plan. Lincolnshire Avenue, and a lot of residential subdivision located in request of thirty-five twenty Anger Road Avenue. And the twenty-two, a resolution approving supplemental agreement number four. Professional service agreement with A E Com Technical Services Inc. of Waterloo. Originally executed August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, the amount not to exceed a hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Junction with Dry Run three acres of the project, contract number eight-seven-seven, authorized American, expedited document.
Alright, that motion has been made with a second, questions or conversations on these three items?
Mayor.
Mr. Boson.
Thank you, sir, I just had a question for Noel, number twenty-one, because I'm an email, uh, from the residents over there, I P P. Hasn't been able to back me yet on, on, uh, some of the damage that, that went on in the sub-development to their, to their property. But did he, I, did Mr. Anderson feel that, that is he right there on the, on Lincolnshire development?
Mr. Anderson.
Oh, Anderson, who's my building director, actually, he's with, correct, with, um, you have the engineer for the, of the, on the accident. Right, I heard.
Alright, so the, uh, representative, please, uh, respond to, uh, Mr. Boson's questions. Are they still online?
Can everyone hear me alright?
They sure can.
Alright, thanks for everyone's time tonight, um, so yeah, with that, that heavy rainstorm last week, we had some. Some sediment breach, our silt fences and the downstream, but. Um, I know the, the homeowner downstream of us has kinda had some issues over the last, past couple of weeks. Um, we've got a, such a crew out there. Uh, to clean up the sediment and to make those changes and fixes to the breaches in our perimeter, sediment controls. Uh, so we'll have that in place here soon, and should have. Hopefully no more issues moving forward here as we begin to rock, subgrade and keep paving in place.
So, so two quick things, one, to Mr. Boson's point, he will work in directly with the resident.
Yeah.
And number two, could you state your name and address for the record, so we know who you're talking to?
Yeah, Nick Brewer, PTA, uh, address twenty-nine twenty, from, from Drive, two halls.
Alright, thank you, I think someone else had a question, oh, you're done, Mr. Boson?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes, um, item number twenty, um, I, I'm just wondering, um, if this is awarded. Who monitors that for appropriateness and completion of the project? To ensure that it meets the standards? And what are the standards, uh, when it comes down to that, uh, remediation redevelopment of that, um, area?
Well, this is the running building director, this is the first time, uh, we had a project, we have a new program in the state, so we will be moving a little bit as we go. But primarily, we will have a development, uh, help with Morrison with the application specifically to the city. Um, funding portion of the, of the max money. Uh, in that, we will plan, as we do with the other projects, this is for three residential units. We will have a risk of the inconvenience we made, um, with everybody, that is, the state application. Uh, we will have it, we, we wire it to the, uh, city citizens, uh, uh, to be on those three units, um, wired to completion. Uh, but a substantiated city, city is for the most part, we will monitor the force of the disposal state program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these three items? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yes.
Mrs. June. Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
Right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving addendum number three to the professional services agreement. With Robinson Engineering Company of Kansas City, Iowa, originally executed July thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. In an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Junction with Westdale Subdivision's whale project, authorized American, expedited document. I'd also like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement number two. Professional service agreement with H R Green Peet, of City Rapids, Iowa. Originally executed April sixth, twenty twenty, in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand and fifteen dollars. In conjunction with official year twenty-twenty-one, solid code, we've constructed, Seth Road, the Highwood, steam project. Contact number one-zero-two-zero, authorized mayor, thank you, expedited document. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That motion has been made with a second, questions on these two items? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Mrs. June.
Yeah.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, can someone take twenty-five for me?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
Like to make a motion to see if I'll consider pass for the first time in ordinance, amend the city Waterloo traffic code by adding subsection twenty-seven, forty-three, two-seventy-four P. Mobilla Street, west side of Mobilla Street from Stewart Avenue. In the southerly direction to the dead end to section five-five-one, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That motion has been made with a second, questions, anyone? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Mrs. June.
Yeah.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
Motion has been made with a second, um, Sandy or Randy has had, um, any objection then to this project, who's come from?
You can get through.
Hello? Is that you, Sandy?
Yes, it is.
Um, we're, motion to suspend the rules, this folks probably wanna know if this is, uh, time, time sensitive, is this public safety? Does this, does this need to be done now?
Um, Mr., um, it's the last one, I think, it's done, uh, for the fall season.
Okay, so you need to, you need to move really quickly, public safety?
Yes.
Okay, that's what the folks do, I'm gonna, um, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Mrs. June.
Yeah.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to see if I can pass from second, third time, from the top six.
Thank you, thank you.
Motion has been made with a second, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Fries.
Yeah.
Mrs. June.
Yeah.
Mr. Boson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison.
Yeah.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, someone take twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Mayor, I will take those.
Thank you.
Number twenty-six is the motion approving change order number one for net increase of a hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars. To Don Gardner Construction Company of Waterloo, Iowa. In conjunction with the Facebook which two thousand nineteen, under winner roof replacement project. Contact number nine-nine-eight, authorizing the mayor to execute that document. The next one is the motion approving change order number two. For net increase of ten thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars seventy-five cents. To Keeners Construction Company, Waterloo, Iowa. In conjunction with the five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center, at Sabish Hall. Ceiling renovation project, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document.
Thank you.
That motion has been made with a second, one of these is pretty large, and I think, um, probably you reached out to the council and let them know, but I just wanna explain this really quickly. Number twenty-six.
All, all heading with your services director. Um, yes, I did reach out to the council, and it's a, a large change order, actually, just a little bit more than the original contract. This was, uh, bid in two parts originally, because we didn't have the funding available. When we started the project to do both, we were, we were out the bond money to complete the project. Uh, after the first phase was done, and that, so that's what we're doing, we did not handle this as a change order tonight, we were, we, we did. And we'd have to pay some additional engineering and architecture season. We're saving the city some money by doing this. You know, the funding is a, 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 a.
Alright, uh, council questions?
Mayor.
Mr. Boson.
Thank you, sir, I have a question on number twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I've talked to Noel about this, um. We, we discussed it because, because of, uh, miscommunication, scheduling an event during the construction process. Uh, to go on at the same time, but I have a huge problem, is that we're renting a building out for two weeks, thirty-four hundred dollars. My contractors are charging us ten thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars, and we're gonna put it back in. We're gonna see a net loss of seven thousand eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, and I'm, 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 I'm seven.
Alright, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
Okay, so if number twenty-seven is voted down, what happens?
You can't pay for it.
Okay, we can't pay for it, but what happens, with what's, um, going on with the convention center?
Um, if we don't pay that, Michelle, what happens?
Oh, I, I don't know the answer to that question, I, I. Oh, I, I don't know that we, in particular, if it's a way for, 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 for not paying.
I'm paying, I'm doing some work.
Yeah.